Okay. Are we all ready?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I want that dollar. Very nice donation.
We'll call this regular meeting of council to order December 14, 2020. And I would like to recognize that we're on treaty five territory and we're all treaty people. Thank you. There is an amendment to the agenda. Res. Eight point one, there's a motion to amend to put resolution eight point two one on the agenda. A mover in a second. Less. Andre, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? And now I would like an approval of the agenda as amended. Earl, less, all in favor? Opposed? Carried? Next, we'll go to community comments and feedback.
Do I do that from here?
You can do that from there.
In the November 18th, City of Thompson. City of Thompson's. Plot that they have in the Thompson citizen. It was advertised for citizen reps for the committees on council. With a closing date of the 20th, two days later at 4:30. My question is, at 4:30 on the 20th, how many new applicants were received? And by new applicants, I mean people that work presently sitting on committees.
I would have to check with Angie, who's not here tonight. She was one of the recipient of it. I can get back to you.
Okay.
Anything else there? Anything else there? Any other comments, feedback? Third time, any more community comments? Thank you, seeing that. Number six, adoption of minutes for regular council meeting of November 30, 2020. Resolution 2020219, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, selected by Councillor Ellsworth. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Council Manitoba, on Monday, November the 30th, 2020 be adopted as circular. Any concerns, questions? All the question, all those in favor? You know. Next, we have six point one is the November check registers. For information is our administration. Nothing, good man, consorts, any question? Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes, I would like to recognize our finance people. I might be kicking them in the butt next week, but for tonight. At the Finance Committee, I had a number of questions and that I had done my homework before I came. And I was very accurate response that I got from our finance committee that were prepared, that were able to answer the questions. I'm certainly satisfied myself on that.
Well, thank you, Finance Committee, on behalf of your council. We appreciate all the work you do. No more questions? We're going to correspondence. Seven point one is a letter from the Minister of Conservation and Climate in regards to the City of Thompson's Waste Disposal Grounds One-Stop-Drop Recycling Facility Project. Letters addressed to Neil McLean, Director of Public Works. Your Mr. McLean or dear Neil McLean, congratulations on the completion of the City of Thompson's Waste Disposal Grounds One-Stop-Drop Recycling Facility Project. I'm pleased to advise you that a check totaling $8,000 is being provided to your organization under a separate cover. This payment represents 20% of the total $30,000 grant awarded. Includes funding support for the initiative. Please be advised that RARS Project 2017007 Grant 5875 is considered complete. Manitoba is committed to becoming the cleanest and greenest province in Canada, and the made Manitoba Climate and Green Plan sets out the vision and plans towards improving waste diversion, disposal, practices, and recycling operations, among many other initiatives intended to move us forward. Thank you for your efforts to safely dispose of household hazardous waste, electronic waste, and used oil. Thus reducing their impacts on the environment and and moving waste management practices forward in Manitoba. Warmest regards, Sarah Gilmar, Minister. So that is a very good news story and thank you to Neil and crew for putting us ahead on the map. That's for the administration?
Yes, just to note that it's actually $6,000.
Oh, six, okay, so I'm sorry with this mouse, I have a very trouble reading. Jeff?
I'm good, I was just gonna verify.
Okay, sorry. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we have administration confirm that the fencing that was conditioned for that funding is up?
I don't have that answer at this time. Whatever requirements they wanted must have been met for the cut the check. But I don't have that answer.
We can check into it for you.
I think yes, I thought, yeah.
It was refencing, Jeff?
Was fencing, yes, thank you.
Anybody else comments on the letter? And then we'll move on to seven point two. Is a letter from the Minister of Conservation and Climate and letter from Ron Schiller, Minister of Infrastructure, in regards to the Miles Heart Bridge. Dear Mayor of Smoot, Manitoba Infrastructure values your feedback. It is the department's priority to ensure safety and continuous progress on provincial highways. The renovation of the Miles Heart Bridge is included in the 2020-2021 Highway Capital Infrastructure Multi-Year Plan with construction proposed for 2021 to 2023. Manitoba Infrastructure is committed to continue consultations on this project. Mr. John Logan, Acting Director of Bridges and Highway Structures Branch, will contact the city office by the end of November to discuss the project's details. We have accepted your request to install three audible pedestrian indication devices on Mystery Lake Road as an official application for this project. The department will arrange a consultation with the Canadian National Institute for the Blind to ensure that the target users will be properly trained and safe use of these crossings. In addition, Mr. Glenn Huthbertson, Director of Traffic Engineering Branch, will contact the city directly to confirm the exact locations for the devices and to talk about further recommendations for this project. Mr. Huthbertson can be reached at blah, blah, blah. The idea to develop a plan to install the electrical charging stations along provincial trunk highway number six in Thompson falls under Manitoba Economic Development and Training. I encourage you to pursue the negotiations regarding this project with the department. Manitoba Infrastructure Supports Initiatives Related to the Clean Technology and Environmental Responsibility. However, the department may be involved only within the late phase of this project with respect to land use access permits or issues related to right-of-way. If you have any further questions regarding this matter, please contact Mr. Barry Rampe, Director of Highways Operation Northern Region. Thank you again for your inquiry. We look forward to continuing to work with the City of Thompson for these important projects. Administration?
Just to note that these responses are due to council's lobbying efforts on these issues. And the government's noticed that it's cooperating with the community on some of these targets.
That's?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very good news story. We've been talking about crosswalks for the last couple of years on public safety in other areas and to my knowledge, with the information we received, we've got about 42 crosswalks in Thompson. If you only did one a year, it'd take 42 years. We've done three already, I believe, or we're in the works of doing three. If you go by the post office and I've done it deliberately and listened to the chirping sound for those that is legally blind to be able to go across there, it's amazing. To know that the government now is supporting to do three more on Mystery Lake Road and even with recommendation, I'm not sure of their intent is to go further. But it's certainly something and a good news story that we should be putting out in communications from the City of Thompson, talking about that. So that that group of people, sometimes the, under the disability is often forgotten. This is a good news story for them and we should be talking about it more. And in regards to the electrical charging stations, this is something else that we consider as an interest, even though that department is not looking after. They're recommending we go and talk to another department. That's something else for economic development, the viable viability of the north that we're looking into as well. I work on some of those committees, so certainly appreciate the feedback from the government.
Thank you.
I think I just want to comment, thank you. There's the comment on the Miles Heart Bridge. That's been a capital project that we've been talking with the government to now. This would be going on our seventh year, so it's definitely now on the books to take place. And it's been in consultation with many groups, including the RCMP and the amount of times and calls that they are getting to the bridge. So hopefully there'll be some construction and design plans to make it a safer bridge for those for pedestrians and for crossing. And I think it'll be a great project to finally get completed here. Thank you.
Any further comments, council? Yeah, I would like to just mention that when people question why we meet with ministers so often, why we're always in their face, why we go to these different AMM functions, why we request the support of AMM and why we pay our fees. It's exactly for these reasons. These didn't happen overnight, all these things, especially the bridge, or things that we have worked for years on. And it's, you know, it's nice to be recognized, but it has taken a lot of work and a lot of councillor's part, so thank you and administration also. So thank you very much, everyone. Next, we're gonna go to resolutions. Eight point one is a resolution to approve 2021 provisional estimates. Resolution 2020 dash 220. Whereas in accordance with section 163 of the municipal act, the council of the City of Thompson has made provision provisional estimates of all operating and capital expenditures of the municipality for the period of time January 2021 until the adoption of the annual estimate. Now therefore be it resolved that the following provisional estimates be hereby adopted. Operating requirement, general government services, $925,000. Protective services, $4,425,000. Transportation services, $1,500,000. Environmental health services, $620,000. Public health and welfare, $110,000. Environmental development, $5,000. Economic development, $125,000. Recreation and cultural services, $1,110,000. Fiscal services, $100,000. Capital, $3 million. Utility expenditures, $2 million. I totaled up $13,920,000. Administration? Oh, sorry. Yes?
This resolution required, I believe, by the municipal act, which allows for expenses to be incurred between January first and the financial plan is approximately. And these expenditures on this resolution include a total of 512, so the annual 2020 financial plan. Which makes our decision.
Thank you. And pardon me, I was reading off my computer so I could do it. That was resolution was moved by Councillor Wong and selected by Councillor Val, Deputy Mayor Wong and Councillor Valentino. Thank you. Go to Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to be generalized about this increase because of based on last year, the provision is about a million dollars more this year. I just want the administration to give a perspective to the public. Why is it another million more than last year? Why, why not another? Sorry, let me rephrase that. Why we budget a million dollars more than last year? And give a general idea to the public, why is that? So then I'm not gonna go line by line, just specifically general, but thank you.
Yeah, so I think there were some increases in the 2020 financial plan from 2019, and it goes on that plan. Some of the general areas where the productive services. The RCMP has gotten quite a bit in our 2020 financial plan, as well as the utility had some additional financial research in that, which came into operation in 2020. Those are related to main areas that the increases occurred.
Okay. Any other consorts? Councillor Copeland?
Yes, mine is the capital. Most of our capital expenditure, what is, okay, first of all, what is this capital of, 3 million of? What is that proposed to be used for?
Yeah, so that's just by 12th of the last year's financial plan, the 2020 financial plan. So it'll be based, the expenditures will be based on what council approved for 2021.
Well, no, what I'm asking is, like I notice most of our capital product comes out of our reserve. Is this coming into our tax dollars?
And no, none of the capital expenditures from 2020 were of tax dollars. They would all be coming out of reserves.
So why are they here? You're going to the reserve, this is tax dollars, right? This is what we pay out of our tax dollars?
No. Jenny?
It's just the overall expenditures for the City of Thompson in 2020, regardless of where it comes from. So some of it's coming from revenues, some are coming from taxes, and some are coming from reserves.
I don't get that because it says a total of $13,920,000 expenditure. I know it's only estimate, so we pass our budget. But that's a lot of money. And whether it comes from capital, is, is, is the, our reserves funding our tax payment? And you know, that's what I can't get. It says here it's capital, but when we do our budget process, that most of our capital expenditure comes out of our reserves, like we're talking about our power truck thing.
This, this is just giving them permission to spend that $3 million, whether it be over reserves or whether it be taxes.
Okay. It says, it's, you're saying it's tax money, but you gotta tell you got the reserves put in it. Why? You know, I haven't got an answer to that yet. Why is capital expenditure, is it your reserve money put into our tax dollars?
It's actually, okay. Jenny, did you want to explain for that, anything?
I'm sure, so it's really based on page one or two of the financial plan, which, which includes all of our expenses, so that the net revenues, I don't have them in front of me here, but I leave what $36 million for last year. I'm not, I don't have them.
It's what we talked about in budget.
Yeah, I know we're talking about budgets, but this, this tell me is what our taxes are usually, protective services. That comes out of our tax dollars, our general revenue. Capital comes out of our, our reserves. Right? Everything else there, it's, you know, it's delivered tax dollars, but capital, usually when we buy capital, it always comes out of our reserves. You, to make the number bigger, is that why it's done? I don't know, I'm asking.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the others and see if maybe, okay, Andre?
So what we have to do is we legally have to, if I'm saying this right, we legally have to give what we propose we're gonna spend and what are, what we might spend money on, is if we don't, then we can't access those funds. So it's just something we legally have to do to be able to move forward till our budget's finalized. So if, whether it's capital or tax, it doesn't really matter. It just has to be there, because if we do need that capital, we can't access it if it's not in that class. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, it just has to be there. So it's just divided by 12. So every month we predict we're gonna spend X amount of dollars. Such as like an EPP plan for hydrant kind of thing.
Duncan?
I think the council, who's explained part of it, what I tried to explain. And I just want to add it to, this is provision, I believe, Jenny, if I'm wrong, correct me. This is for last, like, probably about five months, right? This is the provision for five months before we finalize, approve the budget. So for them to go out and tender the job, so they have to have a capital out of it for that, that's why it's a 3 million and then whatever, et cetera, et cetera. But the only thing I believe we are, we are provisioned for a whole year, which is the protection service, because the RCMP contract, we cannot provision five months. Later on, what if you don't approve the budget, then we all in trouble, right? That's, that's how I understand about this, right? Am I wrong or right, Jenny? Okay, thank you.
How, Councillor Ellsworth?
The explanation, Madam Mayor, really is in your opening statement on your resolution. And I think that might have been missed. And just indulge me for a minute, I'll read part. As many provisional estimates of all operating and capital expenditure, so it encompasses your capital and your operating. I think what Councillor Copeland was trying to get at, we're talking about budget and the taxes, but that may have been missed. It's, it's actually combining the both of them, and that's why the explanation, certainly agree with what the other consorts have said. It's a part of it as well, thank you.
Councillor Copeland?
I, I don't, he don't get it. But that's okay, we'll move on.
I'm sure if you want to sit down with Jenny and the next pair or two, she'll explain it to you.
You know, you, you, you're, you've got $3 million capital. And you say we might not use it, but why, why we budgeting the $3 million that we're not gonna use? And it just goes back to reserve. Right? And like you, the Councillor Eldred just said, protective services, $4.4 million. That's for the year, is it? Only, it's only up to May. It's somewhere different year. It wasn't that, what you just said, Jenny? That protective services is for the year? Who wrote that up?
No, didn't say for the year. Um, yeah, so all, all of the budgets, I didn't insert by 12, so the total budget, so the 12 protective services budget for 2020 was $10 million. But then it was by 12, so that.
Any other questions? Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Councillor Copeland opposed, carried? Eight point two, a resolution to approve the transfer 2020 surplus to reserves. Resolution 202021, moved by Councillor Valentino, selected by Councillor Prue. Whereas the City of Thompson anticipates a service surplus in provincial COVID funding, $960,670.73 landfill reserves, penalties, and interest in public works. Whereas council wishes to transfer the surplus to reserves for future use. Now therefore be it resolved that council transfer up to $1,776,776,836 to the following reserves. Contingent upon the city operating in a net surplus position for 2020. General reserves up to $818,898.73. Transit reserve up to $141,772. Equipment reserve up to $716,166. Infrastructure reserve up to $100,000. Administration?
Yes, so there, there's a few items recognized through the budget, those are sort of through the expense process, that there's potential surpluses for 2020. And we won't know those final numbers until we have the audit completed. So the potential that we would be transferring to reserves, we'll be public funding for the province, which would be $18,998, which we go to the general reserve for council to allocate in future years. And the COVID transit funding of $141,772 to go in transit reserve accounts to allocate in future years. And in addition, the landfill revenues, we didn't experience the reduction to those revenues that we had anticipated when we did the budget for COVID. So those surpluses of $300,000, interest and penalties, we have a surplus in there as well, about $400,000. We aren't guaranteed those revenues, so we'll know more once we have it out of the community, if those surplus, if that surplus can be realized. So those will be transferred to equipment reserve. And finally, public works had a surplus. Some works couldn't be done this summer due to COVID, as well as some deficits that were resulted in surplus. So those dollars will be going to the infrastructure reserve to be dealt with for 2021 budget.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, so just to note that the, the dollars that are the COVID dollars, which is the $818,000 and the $141,000, were not taxed by council to the citizens of Thompson. Those are grants that come to the provincial government, so that's not tax dollars directed to the City of Thompson. And like, like our financial officer said, some of the equipment reserve money was just excess. We took in more revenue than we thought, so.
Council? Earl?
We haven't decided yet if we are going to increase our taxes this year. And until we decide, I don't think we should transfer any money anywhere. Because I think any extra money we got, it's time to start giving it back to the taxpayer. Instead of putting it in reserve, if we can change, put half of that in reserve, $800,000 towards saving the taxpayer five percentage. That's, that's what I'd rather do with the money. Is put it toward tax savings instead of reserves for, who knows when we're gonna use it. And right now, the people of Thompson should get a tax rate, and we're not even considering it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other consorts? Duncan?
I do not know, Mary?
Councillor Mayor, sorry?
I just want to ask, I called a vote because I spoke on this issue for many years, many years. I'm not gonna repeat myself again, it just looked like food, so. I called a vote, that's all, thank you.
Wonder? Councillor?
We are going through budget discussions, so some, a lot of stuff cannot be disclosed, obviously, but what we can say is we did have some surprise grants come through of, what, almost a million dollars. So we need to decide what to do with it. That's what we're doing on budget, and that's why it has to be moved into reserves to decide what to do with the funding. And as for the other unexpected revenue and the unexpected savings, it is also in our budget discussion, discussing, sorry. You know, anyway, so to put in for our budget discussions for next year. So we can't spend all this money before our, our our season's up, our year's up. So I definitely approve of this. We, we've talked about this extensively. We've had really good discussions on this, so we've had very positive discussions on it, that budget, that you see, and I look forward to moving forward and putting these over the reserves for future use.
Thank you. Councillor Valentino?
Thank you, Madam Smoot. Yeah, further to council crew's comments, I'll definitely be supporting this. This is a pretty standard housekeeping resolution in December. If there's any anticipated surpluses, it's important to know up to. So because some of these numbers aren't real numbers yet, because we're not at our year end. So we want to be able to ensure that the money is kind of earmarked or parked in reserves, we can access it for projects or whatever we may want to. And we're in those discussions right now as council through budget, so we haven't identified yet where we're gonna spend this money, but we need to move it into the reserve so that we do have access to it when we do finish our budget deliberation, so we're definitely gonna be supporting this.
Councillor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we did have a lot of discussion. That budget, very good discussion on a number of those issues when it comes to reserves. The city managers pointed out two of them that was not tax dollars. And they have to be moved into reserves in order for us to, to work with what we've had discussions on. And I want to say very much publicly that those two was very much about going back in some form to the city and the resident. It may not be an increase on your taxes, but certainly making a city better by doing work that needs to be done. The second part of it is that my understanding, my limited probably understanding is that anything that's left over from operating budgets has to go into reserves under municipal act. Is that correct? If not, someone needs to correct me on that. So because of that, I don't think we really got a choice in that. So therefore, I will support it because of that.
Yes, I believe any money not spent by December 31st is, we have to earmark it, because that's our year end. That's the last day we're allowed to spend $20,000. Thank you, Councillor Fromm?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, could you, could you help the administration um just confirm or set me straight? Aside from the provincial COVID funding, which is nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we we have a roughly eight hundred thousand that's actually surplus from our budget. Can the administration confirm that that's about eight percent of our budget? My understanding is a hundred thousand roughly, we're talking to one percent.
Jenny?
And so our our budget is thirty two million dollars, uh but a portion of it, only a portion of it is through taxes, so eight hundred thousand would be eight percent of taxes, but these revenues here were, except for the hundred thousand of public works, were collected through taxes. Uh, so the three hundred thousand, the landfill was collected to the landfill revenues, and then the interest and penalties was four hundred and sixteen thousand of it. And so the public works hundred thousand dollars would have been the one that was collected through taxes.
Thank you.
Counselor Colber?
So she just said that even, well, the money of the grant is about eight percent in taxes. We put that towards our our tax decrease for the citizens. Uh, that's eight percent. We come back and say we've got four, why couldn't we give them four percent return? If we got that money sitting here for no reason, now you want to dump it into reserves? And then, I don't know what what it's going to take to get it out, let's put that money put back. But right now is not the time to put back. Wait for the future, we've got to do some stuff now. We're paying COVID, where we come off a very tough year, we've got some good things going through it first in the future, but why not include the taxpayer? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Wonder? Counselor Prue?
For as much details I just I could give, we've discussed this at budget multiple times, and we've pretty much all agreed that the province gave us this money for a reason, directed to a certain goal. And the goal is not the goal is not just to give a tax break, so the reason for this money, we have to use it as the province kind of dictates. It's not just a blank check, to say, I guess. We had a letter with with the funding, with provisions on what we should be, or if you would, let's say, recommendations on how we should be spending the money for COVID. What we decided at a budget.
Thank you. Anthony?
I'm privileged, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to clarify, only a portion of that is COVID funded, the rest comes from penalties, landfill, revenues, and other money brought in, so just to to clarify, if anyone wants to support that, I can, I believe this is only partially COVID funded.
Jenny? Oh, that's correct, yes. Okay. Thank you, is that?
Thank you.
What your answer?
Yeah.
Anthony?
Just to point out again, I believe what the financial officer said is, some of the dollars that we're putting towards reserve are necessarily collectible, is that correct? So they're account receivable, but it doesn't mean that they're in our bank account. We're expecting to collect it, but it doesn't mean it's collected yet, and it's a plan for what to do with it once it's collected.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Brayden?
Um, I just like to to say I will support this. Um, if if we were talking about nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we had collected from the taxpayers and somehow managed that kind of surplus, I'd be a hundred percent in agreement with Counselor Colber and about bringing that belief, especially given the challenge of this year. But I think considering it's a grant, the one time grant from the province, it's different to the reserves to consider in our budget discussions that are ongoing, it's, thank you.
Counselor Colber?
One last comment, or, uh, you remember, the day is coming when we got to put, either we got to no tax raise or we got to tax raise. And the day comes, you remember, we got to pull off our taxes, three percent. You think about this eight hundred thousand dollars that you're tucking away right now, when we could have said no percent this year. Right, you think about that when the day comes, that we got to put our taxes on the end for our citizens. I won't be supporting this, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other counselor comments?
Uh, just a clarification, Madam Mayor. Twice now, we've had counselors indicate that this is COVID money, this is only partially COVID money. The remainder of the seventeen, roughly one point eight million dollars comes directly from fines, penalties, and landfill fees. Just, this is not solely COVID money. Roughly half of this comes directly from the Thompson taxpayer. Thank you.
And we had talked about this, the different amounts were talked about at budget and are discussed, and we will, everything will be discussed by council. Anybody who's that budget has a, definitely has a part to say in how this money is spent. I'm going to call for the question, and as requested by Deputy Mayor Wong, this will be a recorded vote. All those in favor of resolution twenty twenty two two one, put up your hand. In favor, we have Counselor Ellsworth, Counselor McMurdo, Counselor Prue, Counselor Valentino, Mayor Schmuck, opposed. The Counselor Fountain, Deputy Mayor Wong, and Counselor Colber, carried. Eight point three is a resolution authorizing an early budget approval for a new fire apparatus. Resolution two zero two zero two two two, moved by Counselor Ellsworth, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Whereas unit one seventy nine fire apparatus has been identified by the fire department as reaching the end of its useful life of twenty five years, as per N F P A nineteen eleven and N F P A nineteen twelve annexed the requirements by September twenty twenty one. And whereas the lead time to build a fire apparatus can take up to one year. And whereas the apparatus is included in the twenty twenty one budget, it was identified in the twenty twenty budget for early tender. Now therefore be it resolved that council proceed with early budget approval to a maximum of nine hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new fire apparatus. The administration?
Um, this is just really a resolution uh for the next one that's coming forward. Um, due to the, in the twenty twenty budget process, it was identified that the fire apparatus needs to be replaced in twenty twenty one, and whatever it takes a long time for that apparatus to be built, um, it was brought forward that it would be entered in twenty twenty. And in order to approve the tenure, we have to have this resolution pass to allow that that purchase.
Thank you. Any further from administration? Counselors, uh first we'll vote with Counselor Ellsworth, he's signed up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and and certainly I'll wait for the debate on eight point four, because as the CFO said, that will be approved immediately before we purchase it.
Counselor Fountain?
I just, uh, the NFPA standard, I'm wondering if this is uh applicable to Thompson? There must be a population size required in order to have that NFPA uh standard kick in from municipalities, can the administration clarify, please?
Uh, likely, but I know they had brought a form into us last year. Anthony?
We have to ask our fire chief, if I'm not wrong, the first NFPA, is there a population minimum? Close to the standards of the truck and the spike, do you suggest I'm a pick to that, if you like?
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
I'll be supporting this, I don't necessarily want to hold up the fire team from having the equipment they need. It just, uh, um, for my information, thank you.
Any other counselors? Uh, Deputy Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The F F P A standard sometime, I think somehow we as the council, we need to look into and lobby with the the children. Because when the government makes a standard for twenty five years usage of the fire truck. From my understanding, the fire department do a significant awesome job to keep up the fire truck, which is like a brand new condition, I don't think even there for rust on the body at all. So for us to throw away the twenty five years of maintenance, which is the upkeep machine, because of the standard, I think is a waste, a lot of taxpayer money, in my opinion. So now, maybe we should look into to look at lobbying with the government, say, look, mileage, year, and all that indicate as a consideration. Another power to make it up, twenty five, we're just going to pay off the old fire truck, now we're going to diventure another new one. Again, so like, it just like, looks like a liability to the the city of Thompson, ongoing year and year and year and year. I'm not saying I'm not going to support that, because I know you need a tool. When the people want to fight a fight, fight, uh, fighting a fire, you need a tool, a good tool to do it. But somehow the standard, we have to really look into it and understand that. I think it's a big, big burden to us, and all the money that we spend on maintenance for years and years and year. That's significant. So if I know twenty five years later, doesn't matter, you have to change a new one. Why we spend so much money into the machine, which is upkeep to the brand new condition like this today? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, counselors? Okay. See, call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimous, right? Um, I forgot to mention at the beginning of council tonight, we had regrets from Counselor Landmark uh due to a medical condition. My apologies. Eight point four is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of a fire truck apparatus. Resolution two zero two zero two two three, moved by Counselor Ellsworth, seconded by Counselor McMurdo. Here resolve that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the purchase of one fire pumper from Fort Gary Fire Truck for the tender price of seven hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, plus applicable taxes, as per tender file number two zero dash one two nine eight six. Administration?
Just to note, as the CFO mentioned, uh, this was something that was planned in last year's budget, uh, so that it could have an early tender and to be able to go ahead with the purchase. Council, um, the money is now with previous resolution in place, and council now have the chance to authorize this, so it can be built, it might take up to a year for this to be delivered. And any of the responses on the specifications or takeaways of this truck, Chief Brown is here and can answer any of those questions. So maybe Chief Brown just wants to kind of explain what the difference is with this new truck.
Okay, that's no problem. Uh, the difference of this new truck is it's unique in a way that it uh helps us that we can mitigate any of the incidents that could happen around Thompson. Not only in the urban interface, but also in the wildland aspect of it, there's some special adoptions that aren't on any of the other trucks, and possibly not too many other in the province would be built with this truck. Uh, there's extra phone capabilities that would help us in some of the industrial areas and around the city here.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, first of all, thank you to the fire department for continuing to lobby the city when there's the needs of fire equipment or whatever else they would need down there for safety of citizens of Thompson. And I might add, not just the citizens of Thompson, but inside of Thompson, where you go north to the airport, or you go south, we have serviced a lot of geo, geographic area throughout the career of this department. And we continue to try to get support in doing that. In the previous uh resolution that we passed, uh, Councilor Tiffany Mayor Wong alluded to the fact about maintenance, and absolutely I agree with him. The maintenance on that fire truck is impeccable, it it really is, but like anything, the technology and the advancement in twenty five years is great compared to where we are today. So even even if we could keep it, we need to move forward, and I believe with the explanation of our fire chief, I believe not only will we be able to do a better job, but we probably could even save lives. I'd almost go as far to say that by having new equipment to act faster, to demonstrate. And so I'm looking forward to voting on this resolution, I think it's long overdue, and there's a whole lot more. So the citizens of Thompson is aware of that needs to be done in that fire department, I'm not going to end that tonight. But this is a good step forward, and and the last piece is, again, the Deputy Mayor alluded to it. We will pay off one, and we'll start another one, and the good news, I guess, is we didn't have to overlap, or else we would have a tax increase. One would just replace the other, so thank you.
Counselors? Counselor Fountain?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps the administration can clarify for me, I'm glad to have the opportunity to make this public, but we we are to provide going forward a service to the Thompson Regional Airport Authority. And it's my understanding that there may be some shortcomings with this piece of equipment with respect to responding to the emergencies there. Uh, was, um, my understanding supposed to be a consideration with respect to obtaining this vehicle, though the administration could just touch on that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anthony?
Uh, the direction received by the administration was to approach the airport, if the airport wanted to pay for special capabilities on this truck, if the airport had the opportunity to do so, at the time the airport did not indicate that they wanted to put capital towards this truck. Therefore, the administration intended it based on the municipalities' needs.
Ball up.
Basically, that.
So I'll be supporting this to start out with, but uh, the the sole concern that I would have in this situation is we we do have, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, potential agreement with the airport authority to provide and respond. And uh, I'm concerned about sending our teams out if they don't have the equipment necessary to respond in in due fashion. That's all, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Colber?
Uh, my question is, uh, well, I don't see nothing here. On the trip, is there the old truck being traded in, or is it just being checked? What does that mean to the old truck?
Administration? The question is, is the old truck being traded in, or what is going to happen to it? Anthony?
Well, because we have to wait a year for us to get the truck, we'll bring that back to council, what they want to do with the old truck afterwards. Right now, there's no plan to trade it, because it's going to take a year to get the next truck. Once we get that, we can bring it back if you want us to scrap it, sell it, surplus it however, that'll be a council decision, like always.
Thank you. Counselor Val, or Counsel Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Schmuck, yeah, I'll be supporting this, this is a couple of years to get us to get this into our capital for the requirements, and I think we did a good job by deferring it a year so that we can have the last one paid off or diventurized, we've got a bit of an in and out for our taxpayers. But I also think it's a long process to buy a fire truck, because now it's going to be another year before we get it, so we'll have more decisions to make. Obviously, from Counsel Colber's comments about the old ones, so I'll be supporting this, and I appreciate you coming to get further um information tonight, thank you.
Any other counselor? Counselor McMurdo?
Uh, just along the same lines as Counselor Colber, there is no prohibitive restriction of selling a fire truck that is in excess of whatever the twenty five year.
Anthony?
That's what we'll have to look into, some other communities, I believe, like Selkirk, sent there, is I believe, to Honduras or somewhere in Caribbean. Uh, so there are some places that do send it to other places that don't follow the EPA standards. But those are opportunities that are out there, and if everybody, most communities that follow an IPA would not do so.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimous, right? Eight point five is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of chlorine liquefied gas and water treatment plant. Resolution two zero two zero two two four, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by Counselor Valentino. Here resolve that council approved the recommendations of the purchasing agent and award the purchase of chlorine liquefied gas through the water treatment plant operations. The Clear Tech Industries for their tender price of thirty five thousand dollars, plus applicable taxes, as per tender file number two zero one two nine nine two. Administration?
No, this is, yeah, this is just really a housekeeping, we have to buy chlorine to uh continue to treat drinking water, so it's intended, and this is the best price administration is.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, just a quick question for for the administration. What was the price that we paid prior to this new contract? We paid more, pretty much, uh, at the same level of the pricing.
Uh, so the previous rate you were paying was a dollar sixty two fifty pound, and this quarter price was a dollar seventy fifty pound.
You started. So, thank you.
Any other counselor questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously. Eight point six. A resolution to adopt City of Thompson's twenty twenty one emergency plan. Resolution two zero two zero two two five, moved by councillor Ellsworth, seconded by councillor Valentino. It resolved that council adopt the City of Thompson's twenty twenty one emergency plan, administration?
This is also a yearly housekeeping item that's required by National Emergency Services. Uh, for councils to adopt the uh safety plan. Um, what's normally done is whenever administration needs to break it open for an emergency. Or on an annual basis, we open the plan, update the information, and bring it forward to council. Um, but one change this year is we're now also including the business continuity plan, uh, which is a main document. Um, and as I said, it's it's a living document that changes from time to time. So I believe it was updated as early as last week, and I already found one form of that change. But that's how it works, we just continue to update it as it goes.
Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it was certainly, uh, when this was brought forward, there was a number of names that. In our city that are moved or deceased, so this is very important that we continue to update it, it's not necessarily the plan in itself, but certainly the contact, the resource. Is huge, so certainly I'll be supporting the past multiple resolutions.
Thank you. Any other councillor? Uh, councillor Fountain?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, in the past, uh. Our evacuation procedures only took into account a certain percentage of our population. And I get the administration to confirm that we've rectified that situation and now arranged for. Um, at least in planning anyways. The ability to evacuate a whole period in the event of a large um events, such as a forest fire.
Thank you. Administration?
I don't have a little detail, if you could refer me to the paragraph of section. Which you're referring to.
That was in last year's.
His question is, last year it didn't have a plan for the whole community, and he's wondering if we updated it so there's a plan for total evacuation of Thompson in this new.
I'll have to refer a lot to the emergency operation.
Okay. We'll get back, please sir.
Oh, one further comment, Madam Mayor, if I may. Uh, just like to point out that our number one, uh, I don't know if it's priorities, but it's possibly uh. Uh, biggest threat here is forest fire. Um, in twenty eighteen, uh, council and administration, uh, were given a demonstration, not a demonstration, presentation by. Manitowoc Conservation and Climate as well as our fire and emergency services group with respect to uh smarts. Um, the fire smart program. And I still have concerns that that program isn't implemented yet, just wanted to point that out, implemented in full, because I realize that some of that has been completed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, call for the question, all those in favor? Madam? Resolution two zero two zero two two nine, moved by councillor Val- Valentino, seconded by councillor McMurdo. It resolved that council approved the following citizens, citizen and community organization representatives to the standing committee of council for twenty twenty one. Recreation and Community Services Committee, citizen representatives, Mike Howell, Ross Martin, and Jared Howe. Community organization representative, University College of the North, and Momo Weetac Center. Legislative and Finance Committee, citizen representative, Neil Povell, Silvia Lima, Randy McKay, Melanie Cutler, and Mike Lawson. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, citizen rep, J R Beavis, community organization. Reps from Manitowoc Infrastructure and Manitowoc Hydro. Development Review Committee, citizen rep. Representative Dwayne Porty, community organization representative, full district of mystery Lake Chamber of Commerce and Thompson Housing Agency. Uh, vote for administration?
Only to note that, um, with the adoption of the new organizational bylaw council, there's a procedure upon how committee members are chosen. This evening in the in-chamber meeting, council reviewed some of the names and recommendations of support by the chairs of the committees. And council has selected the names to come forth for ratification at this time.
Thank you, uh, call to councillor Valentino?
Thank you, guys, I just want to add, the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee also is in Green Valley, that was in your, your resolution. I just want to thank those that um are going to be a part of our committees. We have amalgamated some committees for, um, see how things go, so it's a little bit of a, of a different look this year for this council and for our community, so. Looking forward to um the new year and new committee structures, and thank you again to everyone being a part of it.
Thank you. Councillor, uh, Forward?
Yes, uh, I also want to thank those who put their names forward, the individuals who have, under their organizations. There is a downside to to what we've done, make no doubt of that. When you amalgamate committees, that means you have less public input. Uh, I don't know if we truly admitted that as much as we could have, but we're going to try it. But I would like to say, hopefully, this will allow people to realize that it's important. For the city to have input from its citizens, and this will allow us to hopefully get more people involved, but. Uh, again, there is a limit to how many companies can buy committees like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor? Any other comment? Uh, I would just like to say thank you for everybody that put their name forward and those that uh were selected. And uh, look forward to working with you, and I really want to stress the importance for council and citizen and uh entity representatives. It is very important to attend these meetings, because it is. You and us that make the recommendations that go forward, so thank you, all those in favor? Very unanimously, thank you. Eight point eight is resolution to appoint council representatives to controlled entities. Resolution number two zero two zero two two seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by councillor McMurdo. It resolved that the members of council be appointed as council representatives to the following controlled entity. Thompson Library Board, councillor McMurdo. Royal Discovery Center, also known as the Thompson Zoological Society, councillor Fountain, and Deputy Mayor Wong is the all. Thompson Recycling Center, Deputy Mayor Wong is a primary, and councillor Valentino is the alternate. Thompson Housing Agency, councillor Prue is the primary, and councillor Valentino is the alternate. Administration?
Uh, this is again a yearly process, um, just to note that one of the changes council is looking to do is that. The members of these boards, um, the council members of these boards will report back to the councillors themselves. That'll be a change that's coming this year, and also, uh, council, don't be surprised, you'll be getting another resolution in January, likely from the Thompson Library Board. Um, which will ask you to ratify their complete slate, including councillor McMurdo of the board of the Thompson Library. So that'll be coming back again, but this is you appointing councillor McMurdo to that board.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wong?
No, nothing.
Uh, again, I would like to uh thank all the councillors that have put their name forwards for the. Different entities and uh stress again how important it is to be at these meetings. I'll now call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously. Eight point nine is a resolution to appoint council representatives to community futures north central development. Resolution two zero two zero two two eight, moved by councillor Prue, seconded by councillor Fountain. It resolved that council appoint councillor Ellsworth primary and councillor Lundmark alternate to the community futures north central development board. Administration?
Again, that's housekeeping items, this is another one of the normal ones that comes forward.
Thank you, council? Councillor Prue, did you have any comments? Any signs of resolution? Any other councillors? Thank you, councillor Ellsworth, for allowing your name to stand, and thank you to councillor Lundmark, second forward. Oh, I didn't ask for both, didn't I? All those in favor? But think unanimously, and it's fine. Eight point ten. Resolution to appoint council representative to the Thompson Aboriginal Education Advisory Committee. Resolution two zero two zero two two nine, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by councillor Valentino. It resolved that council appoint Deputy Mayor Wong primary and councillor Valentino alternate to the Thompson Aboriginal Educational Advisory Committee. Administration?
Again, this is a yearly process.
Councillors? Call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously. Thank you, councillor. Eight point eleven, a resolution to appoint council representatives to the Thompson Urban Area Original Strategy Committee. Resolution two zero two zero two three zero, moved by councillor McMurdo, seconded by councillor Fountain. It resolved that council appoint councillor Prue primary and councillor Valentino alternate to the Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy Committee.
Again, I guess this is a really housekeeping item, there's a couple of questions. I've nothing to say, Captain Audrey, for.
Any other councillor comments? Call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously, thank you very much, councillors. Eight point twelve is a resolution for council representatives to the valet community liaison committee. Resolution two zero two zero two three one, moved by councillor McMurdo, seconded by councillor Fountain. It resolved that council appoint councillor Prue primary and councillor Valentino alternate to the valet liaison community, committee? Administration?
We're getting really housekeeping.
Council? Councillor Colburn?
Uh, question. Does this committee, where these representatives have anything to do with the upcoming valet negotiations?
No, it doesn't.
No, no?
This is a really, and actually with the liaison committee, basically, any councillor is uh welcome to phone in and be part of the. The liaison committee meetings, if this, these are the few that are official representatives.
Good, thank you.
Call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimous, thank you, council. And as I said previously, um, all of us can phone in. And be part of this liaison committee every three months. Eight point one three, resolution to approve the taxi commission. Two zero two zero two three two, moved by councillor McMurdo, seconded by councillor Fountain. Whereas council has had the occasional need of a taxi commission to provide advice. On taxi related issues as outlined in part X of the Taxi Cab Bylaw. Nineteen twenty to twenty fourteen as amended, now therefore be it resolved. That council appoint Mayor Smook, councillor McMurdo, councillor Valentino, as members of the Recreation and Community Services Committee to the Taxi Commission. Administration?
This is also a yearly housekeeping item, uh, the one difference you notice this year is the names of the citizen reps have not been put forward. Uh, in light of, um, trying to work on some transparency, um, normally in the past, the department will put the names forward. But because the names have never gone to the committee or the council for review, um, those names are not there at this time, and then council will be given the opportunity. Otherwise, that, uh, committee to review those names before the, uh, before council.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a quick question to the administration. I noticed the taxi commission always have the. The taxi, like the taxi board always has the owner of the taxi, one of them sit over. Would it be, uh, conflict entered with that position?
So that's why there's no names forward at the moment, is so that. That whole process can be reviewed and, uh, the discussion on from council on how you'd like to proceed in the future. So right now, you're just looking at the three councillors that are automatic as members of the committee, any of those other details are to be worked out.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else, council? Call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously. Thank you. This was automatically appointed back. Eight point one four, a resolution to approve the Building Standards Committee. Resolution two zero two zero two three three, moved by councillor Valentino, seconded by councillor McMurdo. Whereas council has the occasional need of a building standards committee to review appeals as outlined part four of the Building Safety and Property Standard Bylaw. Fourteen eighty two to nineteen ninety four as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that council appoint Mayor Smook, councillor Prue, councillor Fountain. Was member of the Development Review Committee to the Building Standards Committee. Administration?
Again, another yearly housekeeping, uh, resolution.
Thank you. Any councillors, questions, comments? Call for the question, all those in favor? Very unanimously, thank you, councillor. Eight point one five, a resolution to appoint grievance committee. Resolution two zero two zero two three four, moved by councillor Ellsworth, seconded by councillor Fountain. Whereas council has the occasional need of a grievance committee to deal with stage three grievances, a set of collective bargaining agree. United Steelworkers Local eight two two three dash zero two, United Steelworkers Local eight two two three dash one two. And Thompson Professional Firefighters Association Local twenty two hundred. Now therefore be it resolved that council appoint Mayor Smook, councillor Lundmark, and councillor McMurdo as members of the Human Resources Committee to the grievance committee. Administration?
Yes, worship, another, uh, housekeeping resolution, appointing these members.
Thank you, council? Question? Call for the question, all those in favor? Thank you, all? Everybody in favor? Can we do that again, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Thank you, unanimously. Eight point one six. A resolution to approve the twenty twenty one regular meeting of council schedule. So, resolution twenty twenty dash two three five, moved by Deputy Mayor Wong, seconded by councillor Ellsworth. It resolved that council approved the twenty twenty one regular meetings of council as follows. Monday, January fourth, twenty twenty one, Monday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty one, February first, twenty twenty one, February sixteenth, twenty twenty one, March first, twenty twenty one, March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, April twelfth, twenty twenty, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, May tenth. Twenty twenty one, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, June seventh, twenty twenty one, June twenty first, twenty twenty one. July twelfth, twenty twenty one, August sixteenth, twenty twenty one, September seventh, twenty twenty one, Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty one, October fourth, twenty twenty one, October eighth, twenty twenty one. November first, twenty twenty one, November third. Twenty thirty, twenty twenty one, that'll be our, uh, uh, meeting to, uh, appoint the council. And November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Administration?
So the, uh, council is required to set the, uh, regular meetings council by resolution yearly. So this is a yearly process, and make that information available to all of them, that's the calendar of the regular meetings of council. So this, this happens every year.
Any questions from councillor? Call for the question, while, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam, just, just a question about this process. Because is it under the law, we need to do that every year for a calendar, okay, we make it as a housekeeping? And just set up the calendar, is that how, can we do it?
I believe this is required in the new.
Yes.
It is, uh.
Under the municipal law, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other councillors, councillor Ellsworth?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm glad it is a requirement, because if it wasn't, then we had to do it for housekeeping, I'm not sure we'd make one each month, so thank you very much. Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm glad it is a requirement because if it wasn't, then we had to do it for housekeeping. I'm not sure we'd make one each month. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Call for the question, all those in favor. Very unanimous. Eight point one seven, a resolution authorizing authorization for administration to enter into the Manitoba Public Safety Communication Service Agreement with Manitoba Central Service. Resolution two zero two zero two three six, moved by Council Valentinio, seconded by Council Pro. It resolved that council authorized administration to sign the Manitoba Public Safety Communication Services Participation Release and Indemnity Letter. Administration.
Therefore, lost your financial plan of the council office to go with the government of Manitoba's newly established public safety communication service. These are new radios that are being provided through Bell Mobility across the province for all first responders. The province pays for the operations of those, but the council is required to purchase those. So in the previous meetings, we've signed the resolutions to purchase the radios, but it's required to serve this science agreement to be on the service. Why is this coming forward now? Well, the province just said it to us. So that's why it didn't come earlier in the year. We received it, I believe, two weeks ago.
Any council? Deputy Mayor.
Just a question. Is there any money to be involved with the agreement? Or is this a standard agreement with using this channel or whatever?
The money is a savings in the operating cost. So not necessarily on the batteries or whatnot, but on the bandwidth and the support of the network itself that has been paid for by the province. So rather than us paying annual subscription fees for radio that we normally use, that goes away now. The difference is we bought all the radios upfront rather than mentioning.
Okay. Any other council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Very unanimous. Eight point one eight, a resolution to approve the FCM membership fees. Resolution two zero two zero two three seven, moved by Council Pro, seconded by Council Valentinio. It resolved that council approved the payment of membership fees from April first, first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, known as FCM, for the amount brought to three thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Administration.
Yes, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities is the lobby group for the city of Thompson. Other municipalities at the federal level, they lobby the federal government versus the AMM, which lobbies at the provincial government. AMM and FCM work together on issues of concern to municipal municipalities. Also, they are a granting organization, grants dollars to the federal government. And the city of Thompson has been quite successful in landing a number of grants in the last few years. I believe we landed six hundred and eighty thousand with multi-use paths. The FCM is giving a grant of a loan, sorry, of five million dollars towards a wastewater treatment path and they're giving fifteen percent of that. And a number of other smaller grants that we've received for us and those other sorts of initiatives. And the administration is actively looking at future grants that we could do through FCM. So a number of benefits have come out of our membership on this organization.
Thank you. Council, Council Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you look at the cost of the administration fees and then you consider the amount of lobbying and the money we've received as a city through this forum, I think it's a very, very small investment. Certainly want to support me paying the membership fees, knowing the good work that they do on behalf of all of the municipal.
Thank you. Any other council? I would just like to comment that this year, the FCM was canceled, but it was noted at one of my meetings today of the great lobbying that Thompson did a year ago when we were at FCM. So it definitely has been noticed by other parts, some of our provincial entities that we have spoke up on behalf of the province of Manitoba. I'll call for the question, all those in favor. You know. Eight point one nine, a resolution to approve the sports Manitoba lease for office space at the Thompson Regional Community Center. Resolution two zero two zero two three eight, moved by Council Valentinio, seconded by Council Pro. Whereas the sport Manitoba has requested to lease from the city of Thompson one office space which has been identified as Suite two oh five and is adjacent to the upstairs office of the Thompson Regional Community Center. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved a three-year lease agreement between sport management and the city of Thompson from January first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Administration.
So this one, I believe, was we have previously leased with sports Manitoba. They've requested to renew that lease as a basically a renter in the facility. So receive revenue from them on using one of the offices up there. And there's got a benefit of having sport Manitoba in the building that they bring forward ideas, potential for grants for new sports that can be played in TRCC when they interact with our staff in the facility. This has been to the recreation committee and I looked at the finances and it's not being afforded for consideration by council.
Thank you. Any council comments? Council over.
So it's a three-year agreement with a eleven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents quarterly, right? Playable quarterly events and rate. Is that what we're getting?
Yes.
So we're talking a four grand a year, forty-five hundred a year? Okay, I'll support this. This could have like many, there's good enough in the building. Because they're good ideas and isn't it?
Council Wong. Or Deputy Mayor.
It's okay.
Council over, I'll ask the question.
Council Valentinio.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is definitely an asset to have in our facility. Not only just for activities that take place in TRCC, but they will help any sports wherever they may take place in, in our city. And they also help a lot of the outline communities also with sports. So they grant and give good ideas and bringing cynics and offer support. So it's great to see that they've wanted to renew, renew this lease for another three years. Definitely, we saw the benefit of having them in our facility when we hosted the Manitoba Games. And whenever we do host events, they're definitely an asset and a support to, to our community and to our organizations.
I agree, and I think it's likely one of the underutilized places that we, you know, that more people could go to for support in that. And I was also going to say that we really noticed it with the Manitoba Winter Games and all the support that we had as a result of them. Thank you. Any other council? Call for the question, all those in favor. Unanimous. Eight point two zero, a resolution to accept the assessment as received from the provincial assessment branch. Resolution two zero two zero two nine, moved by Council Pro, seconded by Council Fountain. Whereas the assessment for the nitrous lazy creation gas bar was provided by the provincial assessment branch. Now therefore be it resolved that council accept the assessment as received from the provincial assessment branch as follows. Two thousand nineteen, History Lake Hotel, market value five million, two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Proportion, three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. The gas bar market, one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Portion, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. For twenty twenty, History Lake Hotel market, five million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Portion, three million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Gas bar market, one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Portion, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The administration getting?
Yes, so this property is not part of our general assets to the city of Thompson, so we have to have it separately to be consistent with the other properties in the city. The legal just hosting items that we need to begin charging taxes on the property so that the rest of the property is free.
Thank you. Council over.
Is that granted a little more actual tax? So. Right?
Deputy Mayor.
Just a quick question to Jenny. Do we compare the prior to two thousand nineteen, the assessment? Are they pretty much equivalent or, or is different?
I don't think we started. Any other council questions? Call for the question, all those in favor. Unanimous, very unanimous. Eight point two one. Resolution to transfer investing in Canada infrastructure funds from public transit infrastructure stream to green structure. Infrastructure. Resolution two zero two zero two four two, moved by Council Valentinio, seconded by Council Pro. It resolved that council of the city of Thompson agrees to the transfer of federal contribution funding in the amount of eight hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Earmark for the city of Thompson under the ICIP, PPIAS, premium to the ICIP Green Infrastructure Stream, GIS, to support the federal share of the following ICIP GIS projects submitted by the city of Thompson under the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. ICIP GIS Water and Wastewater Main Renewal Project Number six eight zero seven two seven zero six. Be a further result that council supports the project and commits to provide its share of eight hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars toward the project pending federal approval of the project. Will the administration?
Yes, this is a last minute resolution request that comes forward from the province. Earlier in the year, in October, the administration had brought forward a council requesting, at the province's request actually, that council consider allocating fifty percent of the ICIP transit funds that the city of Thompson gets toward the potential wastewater project over the last few years, water wastewater renewals, to improve the chances of the project being approved. Since then or subsequent to then, the province has contacted us and the city of Thompson project has been shortlisted for federal consideration with the caveat that it would require a hundred percent of the transit dollars, your ICIP, towards this project. The overall project value would be four million dollars worth of upgrades for water and wastewater projects over eight years, with the cities already costed out a share of one point six million dollars per year under the utility. So this would be the contributor of an additional eight hundred and number in front of me, Mayor just said it, towards the, this project.
Council.
Sorry, one more thing. The reason it's coming is the province wants to finalize what they sent forward to the federal government this week. And they requested a meeting with me tomorrow on campus.
Council over. I just, yeah, thank you administration for having the ability to walk us on quickly. This is, the fact that we've been shortlisted for this project is huge. I mean, this ISIP program from the federal government, the billion dollars, is for projects across Canada. So I think it's just, I don't want to be super optimistic and, and think we're getting it, but I think it's certainly exciting that we've been shortlisted for this type of a project because it could so help our community with our failing infrastructure. So I think that, I mean, obviously I'm supporting this and, and hope that you can even bring back comments to council and chamber from the meetings that are starting to happen very quickly because I think this is just, could become a very, very good boost very quickly, hopefully. So definitely be supporting it and we appreciate the last minute walk on to get your meetings in place.
Yeah, just to follow up on what the council mentioned, said, if, if this doesn't pass, then those transit dollars will come back to the city. So it's not a lot. And just to clarify for council, this is not a guarantee that we're getting this project. It just means that we're being shortlisted for the consideration. So we need to step forward with this request from the province.
And it was a request from the province that we do this as quick as we can. They gave one a year from us. You know, by middle of December, in the last few days, they've really pushing to get it. Council Ellsworth.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, that was one of my questions that was answered, the eight hundred ninety-six thousand, four ninety-eight dollars. We don't lose it. If we don't get, if don't get the approval, we get to keep it. So it's a win-win. And anytime someone wants to give you thirty-five million dollars, it's long live that twelve million. That is a good news story. Thirty-five million, two hundred thousand from the federal provincial government, if this is, this is approved, which means that our share will be twelve million, eight hundred thousand. And good news for the city, this is work. It would be done over an eight-year period, I understand. And at the rates we're going, it could be forty-year period. So I want to give accolades to our engineer prior to this, our G Bill, who did a lot of good work on this project. And I remember when he came into this chamber and told us he was applying for forty-eight million dollars, I almost fell off my chair. Who in the world would even listen to you for forty-eight million dollars from any level of government? It's huge money. So to see this come this far, but us having an opportunity, being shortlisted to possibly disbecoming the reality for Thompson is a really good news story. So certainly we'll let him support.
Thank you. Any other council? Deputy Mayor.
For the last resolution, I did vote against it, but after I got all this information in front of me and after my deep thought of the thinking of this changes and all this the project that we can possible get it, the money, I'm going to, I'm going to support this just to it is like, no, if you get it, you get lots of money. If you don't, it's not going to reduce any money of our portion. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You have a question? No questions? Call for the question, all those in favor. Unanimous. This would definitely be a win-win separate story for us. Long time. Extra can move into bylaws. Nine point one is the second reading of bylaw nineteen ninety-six dash twenty twenty vacant and derelict building bylaw. Resolution two zero two zero two four zero, moved by Council Pro, seconded by Council Fountain. It resolved that bylaw nineteen ninety-six dash twenty twenty being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to establish assistance to regulate the condition and maintenance of vacant residential and commercial buildings and to establish a process to take title to vacant and derelict buildings to be known as the vacant and derelict building bylaw. Be given a second reading. Administration.
Yes, we're heard. Notice in the previous meeting, that first meeting, this is something that's been on development under the Development Review Committee and administration for quite some time with the issue of how to tackle buildings that are boarded up or general trouble to the as was noted, this is based heavily on the city of Brandon, was the tweet for the city of Thompson's needs and is run through our legal council and is based on research on a number of other communities during the building bylaw. So council now has opportunity to give a second, potentially third reading this evening, so that the bylaw passes and then can come into effect.
Thank you. Call for council. Council Ellsworth.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I want to acknowledge our former engineer, our G Gill, he worked on this. I'm in many meetings and Development Review Committee, where we found we were handcuffed, in fact, handcuffed dealing with some of the buildings around town that's been boarded up for years, been broken into. Fires started, certainly as a public safety issue. And not only will this bylaw help us to rectify some of that stuff, people's going to have to make decisions on what they want to do with their buildings. I also hope that our own city, who got buildings as well, that we abide by our own bylaw and we fix those others well, sell them or do something with them. So I'll certainly be supporting the second reading and hopefully advances we get into the third reading, let's get started on some of this good work that's been already talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only concern I have, I have this bylaw is I don't want to settle, how, how should I put it? The law for thee, but not for me. We have a boarded up building as well. How are we going to deal with this in the public? The law for thee, but not for me. We have a boarded-up building as well. How are we going to deal with this in a public perspective? That's one thing I worry about. If we say, yeah, let's get this bylaw and go and make sure that people follow it. But how are our position? That's where I challenge myself by whether support or not.
Thank you, council.
The way the bylaws set up, you can have a boarded-up building, so there's a process that has to be gone through. But a boarded-up building is acceptable as long as all the rules are followed. The reason that this is set up is to establish a process. But if there's a legitimate reason that the building is boarded up, you're not penalized. You just have to go through the administrative process to allow. If there is no legitimate reason or if the burial building was becoming derailed, then there's another procedure that can be followed to either address that and rectify it or to go after the title.
You want to follow?
Please, Madam Mayor, I I I kind of read through your chart, check out how this process works. But there also a fee involved. That's the concern I have. So because you follow, but there's a fee for you to follow, once you have complied, you'll be okay, but there's still a fee to renew in the certain like compile or not comply, there's so many other things there. I'm not going to go line by line. So that's why I say that's concerned there's because there's also money involved. So this, I I I hope you can explain to me better for our own property in that perspective.
Well, that would be the the city council decision to make. Do you want to charge it each of the city itself or not?
I thought there's a.
Often when the city takes on a bill, if the city's building something, the city doesn't take up building from its own property. Because then you'd be taxing the citizens to pay for a building from something you trade. So the city would comply with the building bylaw, but would be unlikely to charge the citizens taxes, pay the fee unless you direct unless council directs us to charge taxes and pay that fee. But the city would be expected to comply with the bylaw ourselves.
I see the question, Council for Deputy Mayor.
Let it do this, council.
Council for Fountain?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll be supporting this, but the the thought in the back of my mind that we do, as other councillors have mentioned already, have a significant, significant amount of property and buildings that necessarily live up to our own expectations. Let's hope that changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councils? Councilor Ellsworth?
I think just for clarification, city manager to the chair. We are going to, as a city, abide abide by our own bylaw. Certainly, we're not going to charge ourselves. I don't know why you'd vote to say to taxpayers, by the way, you own the building, now we're going to charge you for a fee. So I think that's what we're saying, to be clear. We follow our own bylaws. We have to be a leader. When we do these things, we have to be a leader. So we we, once this is finalized, then we need to do an assessment of our own ability to make sure we're compliant. Before, I would say this very strongly, before we start doing citations on homeowners or business owners, whoever it might be, let's make sure our own is in order first. And again, I'll support it.
Okay. Council for?
Yeah, I agree hundred percent with what's going around the table. I'm very excited to see this come forward. I think we have a lot of cleanup to do, but we have to lead by example. And I look forward to hopefully seeing this byline action.
Thank you. Other comments, council? I feel very excited and I too believe we will be held accountable to follow the bylaws. With that being said, I'm going to call to the question. All those in favor? Very unanimous. And seeing how the second reading has passed, we will vote to nine point two, which is the third reading of bylaw, and this will be a recorded vote. Resolution two zero two zero two four one moved by Council McMyrtle, seconded by Council through. Dear resolve that bylaw nineteen ninety-six dash twenty twenty be given third and final reading and let it do now pass. Administration?
Only to note that this is a recorded vote.
Any other council's comments? Thank you. In a recorded vote, all those in favor? Council Ellsworth, Council Fountain, Deputy Mayor Wong, Mayor Smoot, Council McMyrtle, Council through, Council Colver, Council Valentino. Thank you. Very unanimous. Next, we have the marriage report for December first to fourteenth, twenty twenty. Along with Council Valentino and Lenmark, city manager Anthony McGinnis, fire chief Brown, Inspector Hasty. We met with Manitoba Infrastructure on December the second, Re-Debirian Bridge. Along with Deputy Mayor Wong and city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with Volker Beckman on December the ninth. I participated in a CEDF Zoom board meeting today. It was with, we had seven ministers in the room. We was talking about the economic benefits and and changes that will be coming for the more. It was a very good meeting. Our budget meetings continue. Various meetings were held, development review, legislative and finance. Anthony and I continue with our inner change COVID meetings, not as often as we were, but we're still kept up to date with them. And with that, I'd like to remind everybody that we're under red. We are going to continue under red until at least January ninth. Please read the instruction. That means no traveling. It means only your own house at your place for Christmas dinner. So let's please try and get the curve flattened on this and please follow. I'd also like to mention that the Swim North, our aquatic facility fundraising committee, we have gave them permission to use the free campground. We have nothing to do with it. But they are set up a fundraising for the pool. It has done absolutely extraordinary. It looks very nice out there, and I would suggest that everybody take a tour out there. Right now, you can only buy tickets. It's ten dollars per vehicle or three tickets for four, thirty-four tickets for thirty dollars. And they can be bought at city hall or retransferred. And I suggest everybody. And one more thing I'd like to mention, our cross-country ski trails are really being used this year, very much so. And on Thursday nights is when they do their grooming, so they are going to try set up a policy to have them closed Thursday evenings from four o'clock till midnight. So please follow the policy and do not use the cross-country ski trails Thursday evening. Because if they get them groomed and no people go on it after, it sets up much better. So thank you with that. But with that, this is our last meeting of the year, and I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It will be a much different Christmas. And a happy new year, and we will all see you in January. I'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'd like to acknowledge a private citizen in Thompson named Jeff Jeff Queen Field. He took his time to, which is also owner of Longwood Tours. He took his time to decorate his truck with the Christmas atmosphere and wrote around to have a song and make a lot of people happy as always because of this pandemic. So thank you again for allowing me to acknowledge the person who just took his time and effort. Is a committed spirit, what I'm trying to say. And thank you again.
Thank you. Any other council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. They took part in a demonstration protest on the weekend, supporting Punjabi and Sikh community and the Greater Indian community with regards to the reforms being implemented in India. I am a strong food advocate and remind everyone that the food that gets in their mouths is now a global product and not necessarily a local product. If I was pleased to support as a farmer myself, fellow farmers, whether they're global or whatnot. And I would like to point out, this has got to be about the biggest demonstration I've ever seen in Thompson with cars all the way to the Coral Apartments and back up to the library for hundreds of people that did a fairly decent job of maintaining social distance and they did a really good, peaceful, no incident protest. And I'm sure that no one's heard anything negative about it, so I kudos to that organization for organizing that, the amount of people that they had. It's such a good matter.
Thank you. Council McMyrtle?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Smoot. I'd just like to say kudos as well to the fire department for braving the cold this past weekend and turning the town on the fire truck and show that a lot of happiness to a lot of people that have been trapped inside, lost, spent here at times. So thanks for the council fire emergency service.
That's it. I had lots of compliments.
Yeah.
Council Colver?
Yes, I just want to say thank to the fire department for the great things they do around my house twice. Thank you very much. And good job. Keep up good work. Good luck with the new fire truck. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Anything else? I think on behalf of all of us councils, we wish everybody more please take note that also from our PRCC department, it all started with the citizen getting a hold of us and we passed it on that there'll be a ringing of the bells at six PM on Christmas Eve. So everybody find a bell, ring bell, ring it at six PM on Christmas Eve. With that being said, everybody have safe holidays. Watch for this cold weather. Watch for your neighbors. Watch for your friends. It's going to stay cold for a little bit. And Council crew, I'm sorry.
Just one quick thing about staying safe. Be careful snowmobiling. I know not everything's frozen properly, so be careful out there.
Yes. This, it's very important to be careful with your with your snowmobiling or I actually saw an ATV out on the trail today, so please be careful. Okay, with that being said, my call for adjournment. Council Valentino, Council Colver, all those in favor? Thank you.
Merry Christmas, very good.
Merry Christmas.
Very good. No, I know you did.
That'll be make sure the guys know how much we appreciate what they give.
And Joe Biden got our electoral season proffered in two thousand and sixteen.
That's what happens when the dead vote. They did. They believe that, you believe.
They did. They very, they go provide something with gas.
Exactly.